I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, Earl.
Thank you all for coming. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And Trustee Bund.
Here.
And we do have a quorum this evening. Moving on, we have a public comment. So the first item tonight is representative from the Dixon-Murst Farm Partners and the Conservation Foundation regarding the Dixon-Murst Farm. So that I would invite you to the podium for, or wherever it is that you would prefer to stand. And I'll put on my hat, too. I was gonna wait till the end, but...
How did Kenny get the microphone already?
My goodness, huh?
See, it's been sitting on my desk, so...
That was the last one we had, you know?
Nice. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Sure.
Well, we're here from the Conservation Foundation. We are actually the Dixon-Murst Farm Partners. This all started out back in 2003. Marilyn Mechelini, your previous mayor, great lady, she actually was instrumental in saving the Dixon-Murst Farm. And in 2006 is actually when the, this whole thing went down. That's when we took charge, the Conservation Foundation took charge, and that's when things started really happening out there. And that's when the Dixon-Murst Farm Partners were originated. And August 2006 was our first event out there. And since then, we have, we used to have three events a year, now we have five events a year. And I'm hoping that we make the Village of Montgomery proud for what we do out there. I would like to thank the Village of Montgomery. Without you guys backing us, we wouldn't be what we have today. The police officers here, this guy right here has helped us out tremendously, Armando Saunders, John Fritz, who patrols Dixon Road, great guy. He'll stop in there anytime we want and ask us if we need anything. And just, they really, they really help us out tremendously out there. So as partners, we have a lot of people as partners. We have guys that worked at Caterpillar. We got engineers there. We got former farmers there. We got carpenters. We got housewives. Shorty Dixon here, one of the original Dixons of Dixon Road, you know? And without them, it'd just be incredible without the partnership. And I think with the Village of Montgomery, we're very good partners with them. And I think that's a key, is to keep this farm going. But as a token of our appreciation to the Village of Montgomery, one of our partners took a picture of our farm, and we would like to present this to the Village of Montgomery as a token of our appreciation to what you've done for us. Like I said, without you guys, we'd just, it'd just be a farmstead that'd probably bulldoze over because that's what's happening to all these old farmsteads in the area. And we really appreciate what you've done for us, and we'd like, just like to show our appreciation to you guys. So Shorty, why don't you take that off? And this was, this picture was taken by one of our members, one of our Dixon-Murst Farm members, Dave Rubenstein from Naperville. He's a busy guy, and he couldn't come here tonight. But Dave took this picture of our farmstead, and we would like to present this to the village as a token of our appreciation. And I think it's a beautiful picture, but the plaque on the bottom is Dixon-Murst Centennial Farm Community Partnership, and that's what it takes. Village Montgomery, the Conservation Foundation, Farm Partners. And I wish Dave could be here tonight, but Dave kind of beats his own drum. And he knew about this tonight, but he kind of gave me the blank stare, like, there ain't no way I'm coming there to be there. So, but this is what we'd like to do for you guys tonight.[322.52][322.52][applause] Yeah, I think, I think all the Dixon-Murst Farm Partners ought to come up here, we'll get a picture of us. You want to move into the front there? We can do whatever.
Oh, this is fine. We have the, the back door that, yeah.
While you guys are all moving around, I would say that the village is, is really appreciative of all you guys doing all the work. You've taken people that are city slickers and made them farmers. And the farmers have helped. So, we appreciate it.
Okay, if you want to, we can kind of scratch a little bit. Do you want him on the other side here?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Our husband's there.
Yeah.
What's the gas price on that pump? What's the price of gas on that pump?
Thirty-two cents a gallon.[424.12][424.12][laughing] Yep, that is, that's a real talkative item.
Back to the sixties.
Thirty-two cents a gallon on that road.
You know, and I should add, this is truly one of the best partnerships, I think, that I've ever witnessed with the Conservation Foundation and the Farm Partners. Truly a gem for our entire area. If you're driving through the subdivisions and you stumble across the farmstead, it's just a wonderful feeling. I actually take my bike and my kids out that way sometimes, just to enjoy that view. So I appreciate everything that you do. Like Denny said, you guys are out there doing all the hard work, and we certainly are here to support you and help you in any way that you need. Thank you.[467.02][467.02][applause] All right, move on to item B this evening, which is a presentation to 311 Project from 100 Women Who Care. So with that...
I can introduce it here. I believe it was back in August, it was brought to my attention that we have a Montgomery resident who started the 311 Project, was doing work helping people in our community and in surrounding communities, people of need. And so I'd reached out to see if she'd be willing to come to a meeting to talk about what she does and let us recognize her good work. And we'd settled on this meeting, and then as I was calling to confirm, she said she'd recently been recognized as getting a grant from the 100 Women Who Care. So they're also here to present the check to her and talk a little bit about their organization. So with that, I'll ask Amy to come on down if she would like.[533.02][533.02][applause]
Good evening to the board and the attending members of the community.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the platform to tell you about 311 Project, my nonprofit. My name is Amy Lawler, and I've been a resident of Montgomery for eight years. I live in the Foxmore subdivision with my husband, Aaron, and my two small children, James and Tess. Some of you may know my husband as a professor at Wobunzi Community College and a member of the Keanlin School Board. As my voice is starting to quiver, I'll be very upfront when I say that he's the public speaker of the family, and I humbly ask you to forgive me as I try to channel his charisma and his spirit for the next few minutes as I talk about my passion. Who here has a social media account? Raise your hand. If you're active on social media, I'm sure you've noticed that election time tends to bring out the worst in people. Has anybody here said, "I'm losing my faith in humanity," or "I just need to disconnect for a while"? Because you're seeing so much ugliness on Facebook and Twitter. It's pretty sad, right? A lot of arguing and ugliness. What if I told you that I barely ever see all of that negativity anymore? It's probably hard to believe, but it's true. Social media platforms like Facebook use an algorithm to show you what they believe is important to you. Have you heard of social media for social good? It's a simple concept. I didn't make it up, but I use it every day, and it's changed my life and the lives of so many others, as well as my Facebook feed. A little over a year ago, I made it my mission to help some local families during the holiday season. I built a Facebook page, took to several local mom group Facebook pages to find volunteers, and 311 Project was born. In just three short months, our Facebook page went from myself and a few friends to around 700 followers. Last year, we partnered with Mercy Housing's Batavia Apartments to provide gifts for every single child that lives there and their senior citizens. Once we fulfilled those lists, we added another 30 children to our sponsorship list, many of them local, bringing our total sponsorship to 311. Ironically.[711.42][711.42][laughing] We used social media to accomplish all of this, and this is what put 311 Project on the social media map. Christmas was just the beginning. People wanted to know how they could do more. They wanted to volunteer. Truth be told, I had only signed up to help during Christmas. That was as far as my plan had gone, but I felt a calling. Has anybody ever had that feeling? When it finally clicks that you know what you are here to do? People ask me all the time why I started 311 Project. Sometimes I have to give credit where credit's due. Sometimes, my husband says really smart things. I used to work in the corporate world as a manager. It was, it was very successful, but it was at a huge cost. One day, my husband sat me down and he asked me, "Are you living for your resume or your eulogy?" That moment in time has stuck with me and probably will forever. I'm gonna try not to cry. He may regret it, because I quit my job with a great salary, and I started a nonprofit that doesn't pay anything. But that moment made me rethink how I was approaching my role as a leader. I was living for my resume, for the promotions, for the power. And at the end of the day, and at the end of life, my children won't care what my title was at work. They won't care what it says on my resume. The legacy that I want to leave is one of service, friendship, community, and compassion. So my why is that nobody, and I truly mean nobody, should have to struggle in this life alone. And so this is the foundation of 311 Project. This is why I do what I do. 311 Project recently received our 501(c)(3) approval, which is a pretty big deal. We've been growing Facebook, we've been a growing Facebook community, and now approximately have 2,500 individuals, and we consistently see around 50 new people a week. Through this community, we're able to connect families and individuals in need to resources they need to survive. Sometimes it's simply guiding them to the appropriate existing resource, like the food pantry, the health department, St. Vincent de Paul, or any other number of resources that we have locally. And then other times, it's making a plea to our Facebook community for clothing, furniture, food, and more recently, financial assistance. As we grow, so does our list of community partners. We receive referrals from St. Vincent de Paul, School District 308, District 129, the Aurora Police Department, Mercy Housing, Kendall County Health Department, Red Cross, DCFS, and we've even recently collaborated with the Montgomery Foundation to help a local Montgomery family in need. We have collaborated with many of the listed organizations and agencies to make sure a family is whole, rather than throwing a few dollars to pay a bill while we have no hope of figuring out how they'll survive the month later. 311 Project has morphed into a well-oiled crisis intervention machine. And while I would love to list everything that we've accomplished as a community last year, it's way too much. Just in the last month, we've been able to prevent homelessness for four different families through crowdfunding on our Facebook page. We've provided clothing and diapers to local families. We've collected over 150 costumes to hand out to Batavia Apartments and three local Montgomery elementary schools. We staged an impromptu winter clothing event, which 65 of our clients attended to get warm winter clothing. We paid numerous families utility bills. We provided birthday gifts to children that would otherwise not have received anything. We picked up stranded families and took them to hotel rooms. Sorry. Each one of these families, I know personally, I meet with every single one. We held people's babies while they picked out clothing at our event. We mentored young mothers, gave hugs, and sent text messages to people that we thought could use a little extra love. Our job is literally 24/7. For once, something you, sorry. If you really want to see our work in action, go to our Facebook page. Just start scrolling. For once, something you're seeing on social media may make you say, "My faith in humanity has been restored." Seriously, I still get chills every time I scroll. I don't do all of this on my own. I have an amazing board that are the hands and feet of this organization. Say hi. I have two of them back there, and many at home who are mothers and couldn't get away from their kids tonight. We also have 2,500 people that follow our page and give endlessly and also volunteer. You see, I'm not 311 Project. It doesn't work if it's just me. 311 Project is a community of social good. If you want to help us, the best way to help us is to take out your smartphones right now. Go to our Facebook page and click Like and Follow, and share our posts, engage in our community, and show the community love. We have many programs in the works, including our new volunteer program, our upcoming ambassador program, a resource closet that will be shared with Kendall County CASA, and Save Families for Children in 2019, in addition to a service learning program, which will be rolled out in 2020 and shared with local schools. If you're interested in volunteering, we've just posted our volunteer program information on Facebook today. If you would like to join our community, as I said, just pull out your phone and click Like. In addition, we'll have Christmas sponsorship opportunities again this year, even more. We'll have other fun events, like our Princess and Pirate Pancake Breakfast at McDonnell Elementary, which will benefit a local little girl who has leukemia. And we'll also be having a Santa Breakfast, which will benefit our families in general. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you for giving me this platform. Thank you for caring. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're the one who needs to be thanked for taking this on and, you know, thank you for being a supportive husband and, you know, helping, helping out at home, I'm sure, because this takes a lot of your time. But I think it's fantastic that you've changed directions on your career path and are doing something so fulfilling and to help so many people. So, thank you.
Do you want me to write it down here? Okay.
Truly inspiring, by the way. I found myself writing down all sorts of quotes that you were saying to take home with me. So I really do appreciate everything that you're doing to change the world every day.
Thank you.
I was hoping we'd get to see a big check today.[1236.62][1236.62][laughing]
It's Happy Gilmore time.
It's the biggest one we've written so far.
That's amazing.
Now I'm gonna be the one that's gonna try not to cry. Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Nettie Badgley, and I'm the founder of 100 Women Who Care in Oswego, Montgomery, and Yorkville. And the concept is really simple. The history of 100 women who care, or 100 who care, I really should say, because there are men, teens, people all over the world now. It started in Jackson, Michigan, back in 2006, by a woman named Karen Dunigan. She was one of 12 children, and she was approached with a need to provide cribs to new moms that were taking babies home. It didn't have a place for them to sleep. Sorry. So it started in 2006, and Karen, being the prominent leader that she was in her community, she figured, you know, I probably have 10 friends that could write a $1,000 check, but I bet you I have 100 friends that could write a $100 check. They got together for a lunch, and before they knew it, they had $12,800 to buy the 300 cribs that were needed. And they thought, okay, that was really easy. I didn't have to do any fundraising. I didn't have to walk door to door. I didn't have to make any phone calls. It was 100 bucks. How many times have we spent 100 bucks going out to dinner? Very easy. It happens. So they said, "We can't let this end here. We need to do this again." So they met again another quarter later, and that's where the concept was born. You meet for one hour. You gather 100 or more. There are chapters that are 200 plus. And you have a hat, and you have nomination slips. And any member can nominate any local organization. You put that nomination slip in the hat. We draw three at random. Those are presented on for five minutes. We ask questions and answers, and then we vote. And whatever organization receives the most votes, when you have 100 people writing a $100 check, you raise $10,000 on the spot. Local impact. The checks go directly to the organization. The organization writes the donation letters and mails them out to each one of the members. The concept was pretty simple. I myself was involved in, I come from Naperville. I was involved in Rotary and the J.C.'s, and finally was blessed with children a few years ago, which challenged me to be involved in the capacity that I used to be involved in giving back. And I was involved with Blessings in a Backpack, which is a program that feeds children. And that's how I was introduced to 100 women in the first place. I joined the Naperville chapter. That was by extension. So in 2006, it was in Jackson, Michigan. In 2007, DuPage County was the first chapter, because there was a relation to that first organization that received the first donation. And then my friend Palma started Naperville in 2009. I joined in 2011 and founded, we had moved to Oswego, and now we live in Yorkville. And I love the community and thought, this is something I can do. This is something I can mold around my family. And talked to Gail Johnson, talked to my friend Karen, and it has just blossomed. So tonight, as you heard what Amy, Amy presented at our last meeting, and oh my goodness, how could you not want to vote for this organization and all the wonderful things that they're doing? So tonight, we represent 70 members. She will receive, the organization will receive $7,000.[1461.82][1461.82][applause] I did want to just touch real quick. It does stay local, but the beauty of our organization is if, for example, someone's house burns down, or there is an immediate need right in the community that, yes, is not a 501(c)(3), but if we vote knowing that it's not a tax write-off, it's, you know, communicated upfront, but if we vote, that's where we want the money to go, our organization allows that to happen. We also work, we have a few things that are unique to our chapter. We have teams. So if $100 is too much of a donation for one person, oh, we meet four times a year for one hour. But if $100 is too much, you can have a team of two, three, or four, and then you rotate the donation. So, because I figure whoever wants to give should be given the opportunity to give. And so we, we approach that. We also try to be accessible to everyone. So if for some reason, a check can't be written to the organization, if you just can't write to that organization that night, we have what we call a peanut butter and jelly. So you know how a mom makes dinner, and there's always somebody who doesn't want it? Well, they get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. So if you don't like the organization, this year, our organization is Mutual Ground. So last year, it was CASA of Kendall County. We have given to the Blessings in a Backpack program, CASA of Kendall County, the Elder Day Senior Center, Mutual Ground, the Kendall County Community Food Pantry, Celebrate Differences, Young Life of Oswego, the Forest Preserve of Kendall County, Phase Two of the Hoover Nature Play Space, the Fusion Project, the Oswego Senior Center, Simply Destiny Youth Center. The Kendall County Health Department is in the process of setting up a free dental clinic. We provided for bricks and mortar equipment installation. Yorkville and Oswego Robotics Teams, we helped fund them going to Nationals. That was our latest. And then tonight, 311 Project. We do have information if anybody would like to join us. Did you raise your hand?
For information.
Oh, okay, great. Do I just, I don't know how this works. I've never been in a meeting like this. Do we just pass it down?
It's very informal. So, go ahead. It's very informal.
Oh, okay.
You have to tap dance across the opening.
I'm sorry, what?
You have to tap dance across the opening.
Oh, you don't want to see that.[1617.22][1617.22][laughing] There's business cards here, too. Whatever, whatever form of information you want. Thank you so much for the opportunity. We do have, right now, we have 10 members from Montgomery. And I have, you, you guys don't have a city Facebook page. I've tried to post on, and I've tried to send messages. So we would love more members from Montgomery, so more organizations could be nominated and, you know, have the chance of receiving more money locally here, too. But you can see, we do tend, even though it's Oswego, Montgomery, and Yorkville, I was a little intimidated to say Kendall County, but we do end up serving most of Kendall County with our, with our donations. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Come out here and present the...
You want?
Yeah. Sure, you can come out here and present it to her.
Is anybody, are you guys gonna come and be in the photo, or are you...
Well, since it was you guys, I figured we'd let you guys take the photo. Go ahead. Take the credit for your hard work. I'll just, I'm just gonna get...
Are you guys gonna stand up?
Well, do you, if you want us to, you can. Sure.
We'll do whatever you want.
Hold on. Well, I feel weird getting it on your picture. It cost a high five on the way. Is that okay?[1699.72][1699.72][laughing] Kids and adults, if possible. All right, keep up the good work.
And Matt, that's fine.
It was kind of low, wasn't it? I started with kids, and then I didn't raise it up.
Aaron, come on over here with the kids. Come on, with the kids, right?
Down front.
That's pretty awesome.[1721.12][1721.12][laughing]
Oh my goodness, look at this cutie.
Nice. You nailed it. Good job.
That's amazing.
No, that's awesome. You better print one with the kid in. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Very inspirational. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Look at this cutie.
I know, right? Keep up the good work. Thank you.
I'll do it myself, Dad. Okay.
All right. And you certainly don't have to stay for the whole meeting. You guys can head out. We won't be offended.
Good. Mine's got the flu at home. I thought I got my phone back. She's got it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, they made it. Give the rest of the.
Turn my mic off.
I thought Doug was leaving.
Okay, I can do the little tap dance.
I turned it on, or I turned it off, and I turned it back on when you got up.
All right. So, next up on the agenda is swearing-in of Officer Ryan Smith that I'll ask our deputy chief to, or chief, and/or deputy chief. That's what I thought. I just didn't wanna cut you out. The podium.
Good evening. First, let me say that's pretty cool to see the community come together and some of the great things people do. So, I'm happy to be part of that, to see that today. Good evening, village president, board members, staff, and guests. It's my privilege tonight to introduce our newest officer, Ryan Michael Smith. If you wanna come on down, Ryan. With Ryan tonight is his wife, Rachel Smith, who will be also pinning his badge on him. The newest addition to the Smith family is son Patrick Ryan Smith, who was born on August 15th of this year. The baby's home and resting soundly, as we don't wanna disturb the sleeping patterns of a newborn. Also, your extended family's here, as we have some of our officers up in the stands that came to congratulate you and welcome you to the family. All right. Ryan's hire date was June 22nd of this year. He successfully graduated from the Celia Basic Academy 19-01, which started on June 25th, and he graduated on September 28th of this year. Ryan also served as class president for his group, which consisted of 59 officers. What was cool about the graduation this year was we had two speeches given by Class President Ryan Smith and our Chief Phil Smith. So, it was a Smith-Celia graduation this year, and they both did a great job. We, Ryan has prior experience as a deputy with the Callaway County Sheriff's Office in Missouri. Four years there, he did advise, he spent 10 years in the South, and you will hear him say, "Thank you, sir and ma'am," a lot, which is very refreshing. He has an education. He has a bachelor's degree from Auburn University in History, and he's currently pursuing his master's degree from DePaul University. When I asked Ryan and his wife what their hobbies were, they said, "Really, not too much time with a two-month-old." But in the spare time they have, they love to read, work out, and take weekend travel trips. So, at this time, the village presidents, where are you at?
I thought the look on his face when he said Auburn. All right, wanna raise your right hand. Put it after me. I, state your name.
I, Ryan Smith.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer to the best of my ability.
We have, this time, his wife, Rachel, will pin his badge. And now, the bleeding stuff.
She's trying, she's trying to rest.
That's all right. That's good. Perfect.
This presents to you today
Oh, wonderful.
to remember the day.
Thank you. Wireless mic for that?
Understood.
Congratulations.
I will say to the officers that are here this evening, it really doesn't go unnoticed that you show up to support the new hires. Really do appreciate that. Sets a great tone, and I keep doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, our newest officer, Ryan Smith.
All right. Again, we will not be offended if you leave. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We'll move on to the public comment period. Any member of the public wish to address the board on any topic that's not on the agenda? Or that is, but if you're not on the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. The consent agenda, I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. I have a minutes of the village board meeting of October 8th. Accounts payable through October 18th. Requests from Bread of Life to hold tag days on November 9th and 10th of 2018. Resolution 2018-18 declaring default and irrevocable letter of credit issued by Midland State's Bank to secure development for Verizon in Montgomery. And then, item E, it says Resolution 2018-0, or, sorry, -19, calling that letter of credit for the same. And I'd entertain a motion for approval.
No move?
Second.
Go ahead.
Trusty Marisack?
Yes.
Trusty Bond?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
And Trusty Lee?
Yes.
That carries 4-0. Thank you. Under items for separate action today, we have recommendation of Plan Commission of PC 2018-016V. This is a fence height variance to the Fairfield Way Annexation Agreement. This is located at 1707 Maryland Drive. This is, the petitioner is Scott Clements. And I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Rich Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have before you the recommendation from the Plan Commission for a fence variance for a height of six feet within the Fairfield Way subdivision. This would be an annexation agreement variance that's being requested. The annexation agreement calls for maximum height of four feet for all fences within the subdivision under the annexation agreement. The Zoning Board of Appeals recommended that the request be denied by a vote of four to one at their last meeting. And I know that the applicant is here tonight, would like to speak to the board regarding this variance.
Okay. Go ahead, Scott.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, good. The, the mess that this is, is unfortunate. How this came about, we had a four-foot fence in our house. It was there when we moved in. Not that great a shape. And we had some new neighbors move in a couple of years ago. Had a pit bull and a Doberman. And the pit bull and the Doberman would jump over the fence on a consistent basis and wreak havoc in our backyard, tearing up my landscaping, my deck. And that would get Rocco, the pit bull, riled up. And Rocco was slightly insane and broke through the fence many, many times. Not just on the occasions where my dogs were mauled and one was killed. So, we decided to look into replacing our fence at that time due to what had happened to us. And I looked it up on the village website, and it said, "Four feet within HOAs that were listed." And our HOA was listed there, but my wife had informed me at that time that our HOA had been dissolved years prior. I didn't know that. And I said, "Okay, well, it says then if you're not in an HOA, you fall down to the general provisions of the, of the village, which clearly stated that residential fences could be six feet and commercial could be eight feet." I said, "Cool. We can build a six-foot fence. Let's do that. That resolves all kinds of issues here with the, with the dogs, the damage to property." Did any of you have an opportunity to read my packet before tonight? Yes. So, you saw the pictures? Yes. Okay, 'cause they're graphic, and I don't wanna get into them again if I don't have to. Keep in mind that the first one that was injured was Divit, our little Bichon. He was mauled. He would've been killed if it wasn't just by pure chance that my youngest went out into the backyard. At the time, Rocco had him in his mouth and yelled, "Rocco!" And luckily, he dropped him. And that was it. You saw especially that puncture wound underneath and up top. He had his head in his mouth, and just one quick, and it would've been all over. And then, at a later time, I don't recall how many, how many weeks later, it was a few weeks later, he had broken through and he got ahold of Jack. Our neighbors, these were our neighbors to our, our south. They came in through that fence. Our neighbors to the north let us know that their dogs were in our backyard. So, we went running out there to corral them and get them back. And my family was all over on the north side of the fence, trying to corral all the dogs. And my oldest son, Brogan, whose dog was Jack for 15 years, just this bone-chilling shriek with his hands on his head just screamed, "Oh, my God, Jack's head is gone." Okay, so, you understand the trauma that that brings on. You understand the hardship. You understand the loss. Jack's head wasn't gone. It was snapped, but the way he was left, his head was folded underneath him. She could eventually see in the pictures. So, that was, if nothing else, we were gonna build a four-foot that could at least keep Rocco out. And in good faith, we thought that through what the village had published, we were okay to build a six-foot. So, we did. That seems to be the biggest factor that the zoning commission couldn't understand, that we moved in good faith based on what was published. There's no information on the website about an annexation. There, it was pretty cut and dried. It was just a scanned-in PDF that said, "One page. This is what it is." It, you know, it shouldn't take a lawyer and a clerk and legal representation to figure out if you can build a fence at six feet or not. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. The village published it. I did that under the village guidelines. Not trying to pull anything over on anybody. We thought we were doing the right thing. That's all. So, all of this other stuff concerning the hardship for the zoning variance is because that's the secondary support of asking for the variance, is to understand that this is unique, which is one of the requirements of what needs to be met on the petition. I understand. You guys have people asking for higher fences, this, that, the other thing. The zoning commission's write-up on this is really poor, okay, to say the best about it. They do not encapsulate what is actually going on here. I didn't build a six-foot fence because I have big dogs to keep in my yard, which is what they perpetually keep speaking to in their write-ups. That's not the case. They recommended to build, to put in landscaping to help keep big dogs. There's no landscaping that, you guys saw the pictures of the fence. It's like, it's like a fortress, you know? There's no landscaping that's gonna be able to make that same equivalent on there. There's no landscaping that's gonna keep an 80-pound pit bull that wants to kill something from getting through. It's, it's quite honestly a silly recommendation. It's, you know? So, that was the second part of it, was that, and it had to have been proven that there's hardship, and there's a couple of other things in there that I'd like to address, if you don't mind, one by one. So, we're probably gonna go through them anyway. Yes? Thank you. Number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations governing the district which is located. It is not my opinion of what they wrote here that it can't yield a reasonable return because of the safety and enjoyment of the backyard being hindered. I don't believe that. I never wrote that. I never spoke to that. This isn't about yielding a return or looking for resale value or anything. It's about the safety of my family, the safety of my pets. And quite honestly, since this fence has been built, and I did ask all of my neighbors on all the borders of my yard, "You guys good with it?" Yeah. Nobody had any issues with it whatsoever. They all love it. You've seen the pictures. It's gorgeous. You know, they're, I would plead with anybody to find a nicer-looking fence and backyard in that entire subdivision than this. I don't think there is one. And that's how I maintain my yard, my property. It's just, it always looks nice. So, the aesthetic part of it isn't in question. That was another piece of this. The commission didn't argue on that at all. The, number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Yeah, our situation is very, very unique. They wrote here, "The petitioner believes that their situation is unique to the history of dogs breaking through and jumping over the previous fence." Staff believes that the situation is not entirely unique. As many properties in the village have four-foot fences and large dogs. This isn't about large dogs staying in my yard. It's about keeping large vicious dogs out and from further harming and injuring my family or any visitors that I may have. I mean, this even gets into a negligence thing. What if I had friends over with a, with a baby, and this, a dog like this breaks through and attacked the baby? I'm liable. I'm liable. That just doesn't seem right. It just, it just doesn't make any common sense at all. The variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. I don't believe that it does. It's, it's a gorgeous six-foot fence. It doesn't alter anything. They wrote, the commission wrote, "The essential character of the locality will be altered as all of the other properties in the subdivision with fences are at a height of four feet." And this, I also think, is just a ludicrous statement. The village has stood behind the implementation of four-foot-high fences for approximately 15 years, and to move away from that standard prior expiration of the 15 years and to move away from that standard prior expiration of the annexation agreement would be disingenuous. I, I don't care what's been going on for four years. I, I, I built this fence in good faith. I have a unique circumstance, a unique hardship. It's not about my dog getting out. It's not, you know, it's not about the golden retriever on the other side of the yard coming in. It's about keeping out vicious attack dogs that can do terrible, terrible damage and have done so. Once you've gone through something like that, you don't feel at ease anymore. Since this fence has been up, we all feel at ease, including all of the neighbors. And it's also been a lot quieter because besides one neighbor off on the southwest corner, the, everybody has dogs. And because this is a beaten board, not a shadow box, they can't see each other anymore. So it's brought down the barking quite a bit. That's a very good thing for it.
Mr. Clements, could I ask you just a quick question?
Yes, you may. Of course.
The, the dog that attacked your dogs?
Yeah.
Is that dog still in the neighborhood?
Dog's been put down by the county.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Did that dog go over the fence or through the fence?
One of their dogs went over. That was the Doberman named Rose. It would jump over the fence.
But that one wasn't the attack dog?
Uh, no. Rose was just a spaz and tore everything up, scratched the deck with her nails and everything. Yeah, she just did property damage in that manner. And if you see the pictures of my backyard, I don't like that. I keep a pretty pristine place. So when, when Rose would jump over, that would incite Rocco, the pit bull, to just go crazy. And he'd start pulling boards and battering in with his head to get through the fence. And he did so, you, I'd say at least seven or eight times, he was able to get through. Two times causing injury to my dogs and the other times where he was able to corral them up and get them out. Frank, who's the neighbor at that time, was great about just repairing the fence immediately, you know, in an hour, the next morning, whatever it was, would always fix something up quick as a temporary if we couldn't get to it. So he, he was good in that respect.
Did you install this fence or did you have a contractor do this?
We did have a contractor put it in. Yes.
And the contractor neglected to pull a building permit?
Well, that was...
As required?
Yeah. See, I, and this is my ignorance about pulling the, the permit. The, the commissioner of the zoning committee seemed to have a real problem with this and I can understand where he's coming from, but under the circumstance of what's published on the village site, I, I don't, I, I don't really give it much credence. I know legally and all of that, but there's also a, a, a reasonableness that needs to be put forth here.
So the contractor neglected to inform you, you needed a permit?
They, they said, are you going to pull a permit? And I said, well, do I? Do I need to? But I, I didn't know. I thought, I thought permits, this is, this is what my take on permits were. Doug, the, I thought you would pull a, a permit and I use that phrase like I know what I'm talking about. It's just going through all of this that it sounds like I do. And, and, and that was a way for the village to make sure that the contractors were registered, licensed and all that kind of thing and that you weren't getting in with a fly-by-night that was going to rip you off or build shoddy, whatever you're having built that needs one.
And to make sure that it was built within code.
And, well, yeah. So now here's, here's the thing. Okay, let's talk about code. All other aspects of that fence besides the height, meteoric seat code.
Who, who did the fence for you?
Was that you?
Yeah.
It was Oak, Oak, Oak Mill, Oak Mills? I think they were out of, it's either out of Dwight or Morris. And I know they were south. I think it was out of, I think it was out of Morris. They might've been a little closer. Something Mill. It was either oak or something like that, maybe cedar. But they, they'd obviously done a lot. They knew what they were doing. It's, 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 it's built to withstand. I mean, you can run into this thing, you know, in full gear, football gear and, you know, you're going to get hurt before that fence moves.
If I could just stop you. If I could just stop you for a minute and I'm going to make some comments and then you can come back to me.
Certainly.
All right? You, you go through all the HOAs, you go through all this information and you never seen it said, get a building permit. And that, that, I mean, if you're that good in the computer and you couldn't find that, especially your contractor, he knows no matter if he's in Morris, Ottawa or here, he knows there's fence permits. I mean, he's got to be the dummy or... But I, I think it gets to the point...
Irrelevant to me. The, I did look at what was written on the site about permits and it's about as confusing as the day is long. And I, I am not a stupid man.
No, but you could have easily called in and none of this would have happened. You understand?
Could have. Didn't, didn't see a reason at that time to have to do so.
All right.
Because nothing that was written regarding the permits said mandatory.
Okay. I don't want to get into discussion back and forth. I'm going to say something and then you can afterwards. I wasn't happy with the zoning committee a little bit. None of them asked you why you called the Yorkville Police. And I, I still don't understand that. I know you put the dogs down, they put, you put the dogs down, the next door, the Kendall County did. But you also said at that night, and I was sitting in the back, that you have a, not a, what, what kind of dog you got? You got a...
Husky.
I have a husky.
Okay. That jumped over the four-foot fence.
It did.
So, so to me, that six-foot fence kept your dog inside and the other dogs were gone. Basically.
That was a nice to have.
Yes. It is nice, but I mean, that, you kind of forgot to tell us that and, and yet none of them questioned that, that the dogs are gone and why are you putting up a fence six-foot except you want to make sure your dog don't get out, which is fine. And you're right. It's, you're not unique because people do not follow directions, so that's why they come into us. But, and I'm sure the neighbors around you are happy, but the guy six blocks away, five years ago, wanted a six-foot fence and didn't get one, is not, is not happy.
Okay.
Now, I agree with you. I agree with you. Our guys blew it on switching it. And nobody brought that up to Jared. You know, he, he, it was like a switch and bait. All of a sudden, it's four-foot, whoop. Next time you look there and everybody else does, it's six-foot. Or, or you can put up a six-foot. So it's kind of like, okay, it's part our fault. Okay? But at the same time, and I'm not saying you're dumb, but like, and you say you're not, but I just don't, a, a building permit, I'm sure your neighbors said, ah, these guys are not real sharp. Don't worry about it. Put it up and, and you'll be all right. But to me, a building permit, I don't care what you put almost nowadays in some of these places, you put up a little dinky shed, not our town, but you've got to have a building permit. Everybody does that. And for you not to even think about it, and that's where you'd have been stopped. And then you could have came in for your, for your variance and we would have discussed all this.
Right.
But with those dogs gone now and why you went to Yorkville Police, I do not know. I know your kids go to Yorkville, but why you went to them? Cause they, they have nothing to do with us. They, they should have told you, hey, call Montgomery Police.
Why are we discussing Yorkville Police?
Didn't you call Yorkville Police? You said you did.
Did I say Yorkville?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I meant Montgomery.
Oh.
Yes. This was with Montgomery Police.
Because in two, we have the same thing.
Because our entire lives with our children are in Yorkville.
Oh, yeah. If you, if the dog bites two dogs, he's gone.
Right.
I mean, basically. And that's, that's kind of, so when you brought that up, it, it confused me on that.
I apologize for the confusion. You're absolutely right and astute observation. It was, yeah, Montgomery Police came out on both instances with the dogs.
All right.
Not for just the initial and few little breakthroughs that, you know?
It is a beautiful fence. I, and I'm, I'm not happy with our guys mixing it up for you and changing it on the website. And that's a technicality, I guess, but...
So, well, it's, it's a big technicality because that's what I moved on. Okay? So let's...
Yeah, but if you, if you would have moved on...
Sky now?
The right way, you'd have been stopped and you wouldn't have done it.
Well...
I mean, that's technicality too.
But I'm also saying though...
Hold on a second. Let me just jump in real quick.
Yes, sir.
What's the technicality thing that we, that was on the website that was goofed up that you're referring to?
They changed it. And Jared admitted they changed it. The HOA said four-foot. But then they took it off of it and it put the regular on there. Is that right?
When the HOA disbanded, it was referenced on the website, there was no HOA within the development. It didn't mean that the rules of the annexation group didn't apply. It just meant that there was no, there was no HOA for the subdivision any longer.
With the annexation, annexation agreement still governed. Did the website, does the website say that? And did it say that?
Does not.
That they...
It doesn't say that, no.
Okay.
That's what I mean. It was, when he first started, it was. By the end, it wasn't.
Meaning the HOA?
Right.
That the HOA disbanded over the, over the years?
Right.
Okay. It's confusing, but I, I follow. Did you have other questions for, for him?
No.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to go back to Mr. Clements and let him continue.
Yes.
I started the interruption and I apologize. But I would like you to be able to continue so that we can hear everything.
There's a lot to, lot to, lot to this. So, and Mr. Lee, by no means was I hiding the fact that we had adopted Sky. And, and she climbed over the four-foot fence that had nothing to do with the decision of putting in a four-foot fence. Because the difference between a four-foot fence and a six-foot fence and cost is a lot. And I'm not doing that just to forego training my dog to stay in the yard. Plus the fence that we put in, I don't think that she would have been able to get the same steps, so to speak, that the old one had, that, because she didn't jump over it. She got up and she pulled herself over it. She couldn't have done that if this one was four feet. It, it would have been okay from that aspect. But don't get me wrong, seeing that we were able to do a six-foot, that was just another, cool. This helps too. And I did write about that in, in my, my write-up about everything. So, okay.
When did you install?
I think you're on number four.
When did you install the fence? Ballpark, I don't need an exact date. Ballpark.
I'm actually not sure anymore.
Twenty eighteen?
Was it this? No, summer of 2017. I wrote that here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And these, these incidents were, I think in the summer and fall then of 2016. And then after winter... No, no, no. These were, these were then. These were, these were, these were the same season before we built the fence. Right? These were the same season.
Of the dogs getting injured.
Yeah, yeah. It was like spring into summer type of situation. Summer 2017 then, we had the fence built a year ago. Yeah, that all makes sense. So, okay. Number, number, any other questions? Okay. Number four, the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved will bring a particular hardship upon the owner as distinguished from mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. The petitioner believes that requiring the fence to be lowered to four feet would result in a hardship as the fence would no longer be structurally sound. This would result in the entire fence being required to be removed and replaced with a four-foot fence. That is true. It is the staff's opinion here that the fence could be constructed to meet the annexation agreement restriction, not in its current state. No. It, it would have to be torn down and a four-foot fence would have to be put up. That's, that's a hardship of, of having to comply with it because of course that's going to be financially infeasible for me. The, the, the hardship here is that we, we go back to, we go back to a four-foot fence or maybe even no fence. If by the strict letter, we have to comply, well, the only thing I can do is take the fence down. I can't afford to put a new one up. So now we are fenceless. We have nothing guarding our borders. All of the neighbors tie into my fence. So there's going to be gaps in the corners of all their backyards. And the yards to the south and the north of me will be 100% wide open, of which the yard south to me is a rental. And people are in and out of there all the time. We never know what we're going to get. Understanding that, need to understand the peace of mind that this fence brings to my family. We have a right to that. Without it, we don't have that peace of mind. Because when you've gone through something so traumatic as this and you see your 16-year-old son screaming like that and you see your dogs injured and the one, and the one dead and you're just not the same. You don't, you don't feel safe. You don't feel, you know, and, and any time that, until this was taken care of, I mean, we, we're, we're out in the yard with the old fence, with our dogs to make sure that their dogs weren't coming over. It's just no way to live. Even, even with those dogs being gone now, it, it, it doesn't take away that fear and anxiety. It, it just doesn't. Anyone that's gone through something that traumatic would, understands when you go through something like that, you change. You, you don't feel safe in your own, your own backyard. And I, I don't think that's really right either. Cause we're talking, we're, we're talking two feet of airspace, guys. It's already up, you know? No one was trying to pull anything over on anybody in the village. It, it's unique. You know, you brought up that Mr. Lee, the, the people six blocks away might be angry because they petitioned for a six-foot fence and got denied. Well, were their circumstances unique? I don't think they came to you and, and, and were able to provide the documentation that I have from soup to nuts of how this came about. And they don't have a hardship of one of their dogs was mauled and another one was killed. That's a hardship and that's unique.
Well, the difference is, is maybe it was five, 10 years ago even when they wanted it. The difference is at that time, the HOA was active and it said you couldn't.
That's not my issue.
Now, I know it isn't now, but I'm just saying. So I'm saying you're correct in that part of it.
Right.
I'm saying you're not correct in not getting the building permit and then other stuff, but...
I understand the incorrectness of not getting the building permit. Understand that reading that is nothing short of head-spinningly horrible to try and ascertain. And it doesn't say required. It doesn't say mandatory.
Can I interrupt?
It says, under these circumstances, you da-da-da-da-da-da. And it gets into all this stuff about, like it's written for the contractors to read, not a resident. They might understand it, but I sure didn't.
I pulled up the village webpage on residential construction projects. There's a specific page on permits. And it says permits are required for the following types of home construction projects. And it specifically iterates fences. And it mentions that fences are to be installed by a licensed contractor and under a permit and under a Julie Dig. Did, did you have a Julie Dig as well?
Did, yes.
I didn't find this to be terribly complex or complicated to follow.
Stan, I don't know what you're looking at. And I, I, I don't say that what you're saying is, is, is untrue. You're obviously reading it right off the site. That's not what I saw. It was, it was a link off of where I was looking at, at the fences. And it was a, a small, little rectangular box down on the lower left-hand side of the page that I was looking at. And it was just horribly difficult to understand. Okay? That is plain and simple language and it's easy to understand.
All I did was go to the website and search for the word fences and this page came up right away.
Okay.
Perhaps that's a new feature, but I don't want to mislead people.
I didn't see that.
It's not convoluted now and it's not hard to find.
I go, I can't go avoid going back to because I've put a fence in my yard and I do have an HOA and I would love to have a six-foot fence and so would most of my neighbors. But the HOA says you can't. When you pull a permit, because you're required to, and every contractor that puts fences in knows what towns require permits. And when he asks you if you're going to pull a permit and you shrugged your shoulders, that's where, that's where this went south.
And they said, no, if you don't care, we don't care. I said, okay.
Well, there you go. This was a very large mistake, a very expensive mistake because you chose not to pull the permit because this whole thing would have stopped. because you chose not to pull the permit, because this whole thing would have stopped right there.
Maybe.
Code enforcement would have told you right then, you can't install this without getting a variance.
We would have been talking about the variance, which is where we're at right now.
Okay, so we're not even going to take into consideration, because you keep talking about how expensive this is going to be.
Yeah.
So we're going to take that out of the equation, because we don't care about that.
Why would we not care about that?
Well, you just said, we would be here discussing it had you done it properly.
No, I don't agree with that. I don't like the use of the word "properly."
Pulling the permit that's required by code, by village ordinance?
Yeah.
That's not proper?
Not by why? I read, no.
So let's, so I understand the point that everybody's making. And it may be clear to us and it may have been unclear to you. And I don't want to unfairly characterize it that you might have known that a permit was required and didn't pull a permit. Unless that changes your decision, unless that somehow impacts your decision on whether or not to grant a variance, the hardship he's claiming is based on the dogs being able to jump the fence, not the inconsistency or the, or the desire, or the perceived inconsistently on our website. I will admit, as a village official, it is confusing to follow the fence regulations as they go through our village. And so I will, I will grant that. But unless the pulling of the permit is, is important in your decision-making, let's move on to the other issues. If that is important to that, then let's keep talking about it.
It is important to me.
It is to me as well, because that's why it's there.
I guess if he, right, but if he answers the question that yes, he knew of a, either way, regardless of the answer, how are you going to, how are you going to feel on this? How are you going to vote on this?
I'm a no. I mean, I'm a, I'm not in favor of it, because of that. Because had you pulled the permit, asked the question, picked up the phone and called, this whole thing would have stopped and then you would have been having conversations beforehand. Instead, the vendor asks you, are you going to pull a permit? And you say, well, I don't care if you don't care. And you guys look at each other and shrug your shoulders and now we're here. And it's being put on me. I live in a subdivision where the original board allowed people to put sheds in. It's against the annexation agreement. There's now 104 people with sheds. So when your neighbor puts in a six-foot fence, we now have to try to explain to them, well, he gets one, but you don't. You get one, he doesn't.
And that's what I'm giving you the armament to do. So that you don't have to worry about the one six blocks away who tried five years ago to get it. They didn't have a vicious dog attack come into their yard multiple, multiple times, tearing up their yard, killing their dogs.
It went through the fence, correct?
Because the other one went over it. The other one went over it and that would incite Rocco to go insane against our fence, because he had to get in there too. Okay? So, yes, it was...
So a new four-foot fence wouldn't have stopped that. This fence was pretty dilapidated, correct? You mentioned it. The fence that was there was in pretty disrepair, correct? So the new four-foot fence, you don't think would have stopped that dog from coming through?
I do think that it would have stopped Rocco from getting through. It would not have stopped Rose from jumping over. Because she didn't climb over. She hurled the thing. She cleared it free jump.
But that one was, the issue is that it mauled your dogs. The issue is that it mauled your dogs and that was the little one that went through the fence that was in disrepair.
Well, yeah, I don't know if I'd call it little. It's 80 pounds of terror.
All right.
Not tall, sorry.
No, I appreciate the back and forth. Did you go through, finish going through the conditions?
No, not quite. I think I'm on fine.
Then I do have two questions for our attorney when you're done and then, and then we'll have discussion. So you want to finish going through those?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So finishing up on number four, with the four-foot fence and, and the financial hardship, plus if it were to be required to be a four-foot, that, that does remove an awful lot of our feeling of safety in our yard. Because now that's all open and is a, it's a thoroughfare for something like this to happen again. All right, number five. That the conditions upon which the application for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zone classification. The petitioner believes that their situation is unique due to the history of dogs breaking through and jumping over the previous fence. We've talked about this at length. Yes, I think that's very unique. This isn't, this isn't about keeping a dog in. It's not, it's not, it's not about keeping anyone's little fluffy out or anything like that. It's about the safety of my family and of my pets and the tranquility of my own backyard. That is a unique hardship. Anybody else that has come to you asking for a six-foot fence has not come to you with these circumstances? They have not. That makes this unique. And it is unique and it is a hardship. There's the armament you need to go back to these people and say, hey, this guy had this happen. Did you? No, you didn't. So where's your unique hardship? Well, if it's because they've got a Great Dane that can climb over a four-foot fence, that's not a hardship. Train your dog. Keep it on a chain, whatever. Whatever you need to do to keep it within your own boundaries. This is about an attack that was, that was put on my family and my dogs. That's unique and that's a hardship. Number six, the need or purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to make more money. We've gone through that and the commission didn't dispute that. No, it's not about making any money. We're, we're happy here. We're not going anywhere. Seven, the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or unduly injuries to other property improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. I believe that granting the variance doesn't cause detriment to other properties in the neighborhood. And as, as they have here, I've indicated the correspondence occurred with the neighbors prior to constructing the fence. They're all fine with it. And we've even seen other things like it's a lot more peaceful out there, because all of everybody's dogs aren't always barking whenever they're out in the backyard anymore. It's a lot more peaceful. So there's those sorts of things that came out of it too, that we, we didn't even foresee. The, the staff believes that the variation could be detrimental to the residents that have previously inquired into gaining permission for higher fence due to their ownership of large dogs that have since abided by the annexation agreement. Again, it's not the same circumstances. That's not an argument. That's, it's not an argument. It's not the same circumstances. It's not unique. It's not a hardship. And, and I believe the hardship had to be, was required to not be of your own making. Because they have a large dog and want a six-foot fence because they can't train their dog, that's a hardship in their own making. This isn't about me and anything that I've got. This is, this is about keeping everything else out so that I can have peace in my own home. Number eight then, that the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property or substantially increase the danger of fire or otherwise endanger the public safety or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. I believe that the variation would not result in physical impairment or diminish the value of surrounding properties. And the staff agreed with me on that standard. Do you guys have any further questions for me?
One second, before we, before we move forward. I do, I've changed. I have three questions. One is the legal basis on which we can grant here, as compared to like Foxmore. We've had situations before where somebody's requested a variance in Foxmore and we were actually unable to approve something like that, because we needed like 100% of the property owners to do that. And we're able to do that here. My other question is legal precedent.
Yes. Okay, so the legal basis for this particular subdivision is a little different than some of the others in the past, just because the annexation agreement governs what the process is. And I know in the past, there's been requests for variances, for fences, where the annexation agreement has set forth a process where you'd have to amend the whole agreement. That's not the case in this particular subdivision and it's not the case in a few other subsequent two. Some of the older ones have the more stringent requirement and the newer agreements allow for lot-by-lot variances. So that's why this particular subdivision and owner can request a variance for their lot without having to amend the entire agreement, while older agreements require the entire agreement itself get amended, which requires all the, you know, many of the owners in the subdivision to vote in favor or not. So that's why this, I guess that's how it got here, is a lot-by-lot request and not an overall amendment to the annexation agreement. As far as the legal precedent that would be set, as you know, you know, to grant a variance request, you have to make certain findings of fact. So, I mean, it's really a matter of policy as to, I mean, number one, if you're granting a fence variance, which you're allowed to do under the annexation agreement, you then, you know, are wonder, you have to be consistent, you know? So I guess the question becomes, what is consistent, you know, with this, you know, with another dog, with not another dog? You know, there's no strict rule that it has to be the exact same situation. So, you know, you have to be ready to know what that threshold is, you know, with that hardship and how it applies to the findings of fact. So of course, what you do here doesn't bind you to something else, but it does, you know, it does set the bar for what residents are going to look at and how they're going to make their argument. And whether or not there's a similar or not, I don't know. And I also don't know, you know, there's no legal threshold for, you know, the nuisance of a neighbor. And that's not typically what a variance looks at. What a variance typically looks at is what is unique about this particular property, not necessarily, you know, an adjacent use of the property. Is this parcel uniquely shaped? Is typically the type of hardship or, you know, thing that we look at with the variances. So, you know, again, it's just to look at. You'd have to make a finding of fact in this case. And any other case, you'd have to make the same findings of fact, but you would want to be consistent across, you know, how you're treating neighbors with similar situations. You know, and it's, there's no rule again to say that, you know, a dog must be mauled and killed in order to grant a variance, so therefore, your request isn't valid. I mean, that's simply just not the case. So as a board, you have to determine what that policy hardship level would hit, you know, and kind of, again, address it as they come up, which you don't know how many there might be or not. So it's just something to consider. But again, you're just looking at the findings of fact here that are in front of you and seeing how that applies or doesn't apply. And what I heard, I just wanted to clarify for the record with regard to some of the permit. The way I'm hearing it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's kind of going to that hardship element. As what I'm hearing is the, you know, it was kind of argued that, you know, having to tear down the fence would be a hardship. And then the board members are saying, well, it's not a hardship, because you would have gotten the permit. And that's kind of where I'm seeing it come into play on that particular factor is, you know, there's a hardship of worrying about the adjacent property, which is one argument. But then there's also the hardship of tearing down the fence. And what I'm hearing is that wouldn't be taken into consideration from what I'm hearing from the board, because the hardship of tearing down the fence wouldn't have been a hardship before the permit happening in the first place. So I think that's the context in which I'm hearing it. So just to kind of put that into how it would fit in the findings of fact. And again, that's up to the board how to apply, but that's what I'm understanding from what I'm hearing. And then just as far as an actual voting requirement, because the planning commission recommended denial, it would be a super majority vote of the board in order to overturn what the planning commission's denial recommendation was. So here it would be four out of the six trustees, or if the village president wanted to vote, it would be five out of the seven board members. And that would be everybody, not just those present super majority, but all members of the board in total.
So can, we can't vote on this?
Well, we don't have the ordinance.
Tonight is just the recommendation, so you would be accepting the recommendation, which as we know, doesn't mean you agree or disagree to grant the fence. It means you're just accepting what the plan commission said, you know, that they met and that that's the report.
And then how do we?
I think before staff prepared the ordinance, we're looking, because if it was clear, because of the requirements, that there was a majority of you or all of you leaning one way or the other, we would not bother bringing it to you dependents.
But when it, if it does come before us and it requires the super majority, so we need to have the full board present?
No.
You don't need the full board present, but your vote, it's not just the super majority of those present. It would be, the number doesn't change regardless of how many people are here.
If only four of you were here, then all four would need to be.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the number doesn't change based on those present.
Thank you.
I have one other question for my lawyer friend. I apologize. I didn't see you. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The annexation agreement. After the annexation agreement expires, it reverts to village ordinance?
Correct.
What is the time? Does anybody have the timeline of when the ordinance, when the?
2023.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry. It was with a couple of years.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I apologize.
Just to piggyback on what trustee Marasek was asking. Do we have a way to amend that agreement or we have to leave it in place to 2023?
The annexation agreement as a whole, there's ways, to amend the agreement as a whole, you would need then the entire subdivision votes, because now instead of a single ownership, like when you have a developer, it's a lot, it would be a certain number of people in the lot.
The residents in the subdivision have to vote to change that annexation agreement.
Correct. Yes. And I mean, the village also, you know, I mean, there's options globally that we could explore if you wanted to make an across-the-village change. But again, then you're looking at all subdivisions rather than just this one.
Right. So my feeling with the, my opinion on this, I actually would like to revisit the idea of having six-foot fences. I'm not very clear on this history behind it being a four-foot maximum fence. That's before my time. So if somebody in the room has some history they can share, I would like to hear it. But I certainly would be open to discussing that. In the HOA groups on Facebook, almost every day, there's a loose dog. There's two loose dogs, three loose dogs. We have police officers chasing loose dogs. I think having the six-foot fence could potentially cut that down a little bit. And I know that has nothing to do with what you're asking.
I agree, but the points you bring up are to my point of wanting that added security.
Right.
I don't know anybody else's dogs that are roaming the neighborhood. Don't want them in my yard.
Right. And I don't want to see that happening.
Right.
But I'm saying it's happening fairly regularly. So that's why I'm open to discussing a maximum.
Why we did this, and I was there when I started, is every subdivision would come in. Rich knows that, because he was the head of one of the subdivisions. Every subdivision would come in and they, that developer would say, I want the good look. I want the black mailbox, white pole. I want four-foot fences all around, so we don't look like, I think as they used it, like, like we're all in jail. So that's what we passed, because it was the developer. So everybody bought that house was told that. The problem is, he wasn't there in the beginning, because he bought the house later and that's what happens. But, and, and the old people around said, we just want to keep it like it is, six-foot, four-foot, whatever. And they said, fine, because that's, you're just the normal people that have been here for, you know, 30 years or whatever. But the new subdivisions, everyone changed their HOA. And everyone is whatever the developer said, and then he was supposed to explain it. And that's why we have the different variances out there. The question, I guess I have for Lauren is, if it was me, okay, I would say, I would know that the dog's long gone, so I would not use it as an excuse. I would use the HOA and say, look, when I looked at it, it said HOA. And then because, and he even said, this is the zoning me, because he brought it up, Jared changed it. So now, in a court of law, is, you know, where are we at there on that?
I mean, from a strictly legal perspective, ignorance of what the rule is isn't an excuse to not follow the rule. You know, the board, of course, whatever is on the website or not on the website, I don't know. There is a difference though, I mean, even if an HOA is disbanded, HOA have rules and regs and covenants that have to be followed. That's separate and apart from an annexation agreement. So regardless of if there is an HOA or not an HOA, there's still an annexation agreement. And I can't speak to anything with regard to what the website said, how confusing it may or may not have been. But the fact that an HOA disbands doesn't nullify in any way the fact that an annexation would exist on the property. So that agreement would continue regardless. Correct.
And I would question though, I mean, I wouldn't know, I have an HOA. If my HOA disbanded, I wouldn't know to go look up some annexation agreement.
And that's a, I mean, that's a very practical concern. I'm just strictly giving you what the legal...
Jeff, I'm saying, had I not been sitting in this seat for years, no, just as resident living over there in my HOA, I would not know to go and look up an annexation agreement.
Yeah, and myself, I was, I was here all the time when they had all these annexation agreements coming and going. And I would say right away, before she said it, I'd say, go back to my annexation agreement. I'm not saying the average person would know that. But as Jeff said, I would call, and especially his contractor. If he's got insurance and all that, he's got to understand that he's got to call, I would think. he's got to call, I would think, or that he would have to have a permit, or he's against the law. So, but I know in a lot of villages, if they catch you, oh, I'll pay the, what is it, 50 bucks, here's a 50, sorry, you caught me. And I'm sure that's what this guy did if he's from Ottawa or something, he's probably saying, if I get caught, we'll pay. If not, don't worry about it.
So Mr. Lee, that brings a real nice segue into a point that I wanted to make concerning the lack of polling permit. The fact of the matter is that I didn't, it is pure conjecture and of no fact whatsoever what would have happened if I did. Have no idea what would have happened. We don't know because it didn't happen. So it's impossible to say what would have happened. We don't have that type of.
They would have told you, you can't build a six-foot fence, because they have the annexation agreement and know what your rules and regulations are, and they would have told you, you cannot have a six-foot fence where you live.
That I understand. We don't know what would have happened with the zoning commission. We don't know, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know. Here's, here's the facts. It wasn't pulled, the fence is built. What is, what is the penalty? So I'm sure I'm not the only one that's ever done this. What's the penalty for somebody that doesn't pull a permit?
If the permit's approved, I think that they can probably pull, pay the permit fee. I'm not sure about a penalty, but I.
The penalty for not pulling a building permit and then building a structure and then coming in subsequently getting a permit is you pay double the permit fee, but that doesn't solve the zoning violation.
As long as it's in compliance. If you built something and it wasn't in compliance, you would be required to remove it.
That's one element.
I understand. So what we're looking at is two feet of airspace and a double permit fine.
No, what we're looking at is a zoning violation.
It's two separate issues right now. I mean, there's the issue of the permit, which nobody is here to discuss whether or not there should be a fine for a permit. That's not what the board would decide. What the board is deciding is the zoning issue strictly, you know, and whether or not he would be fined for a permit or can keep the fence or not keep the fence. Here is just reviewing whether or not there's a zoning variance. And the solution would be whether or not the property has to come into compliance or whether a variance is requested. So coming into compliance would mean tearing the fence down and/or leaving the fence down and building a new fence, or allowing the current fence to stay, and then, I guess, more or less grandfathering in, you know, the current violation by granting the variance.
There is one possible other alternative, is that if the variance is denied, the two feet of the six-foot fence could come off the top and be recapped and be within compliance of the zoning.
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
It doesn't mean that the entire fence has to be removed.
It does. Taking two feet off the top of the fence will render it structural, this is structural integrity to be useless. It won't have any strength.
Right. But the manner with which you bring your fence into compliance, if we were to deny this, isn't going to be a basis of my decisions, right?
Okay.
If we grant, and here's my biggest concern, we've probably had, and I'm pulling this number out, at least a dozen people in that subdivision alone, let alone all of the subdivision on the West Side, call and ask, can I put in a six-foot fence? I really want to put in a six-foot fence. And we've told them that you cannot. So the fact that you didn't know the regulation shouldn't be either your hardship or held against you. You have.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. In my opinion. You have a fence that's two feet higher than is allowed by the annexation agreement. Mind you, we cannot grant, in my opinion, a variance based on ignorance of the annexation agreement. You have a fence that's two feet too tall. You have a situation that is very different, in my opinion, from many other situations. People have come to us from, I know specifically Balmoree, where they, didn't they go out and got signatures from every home before we modified their annexation agreement? Your situation is different. I don't want to use the word unique as a dog owner, and I know that there's many, if not everybody else on this board, has a pet and would be honestly very impacted by the situation that happened. Do I know that, do I think that that rises to the level of granting a variance? I don't think so. I think that if we make this exception for you based on some non-zoning issue, then we need to be consistent. The next time somebody comes up to us, we read through our criterion, and they use a non-zoning reason for granting the variance, more of an emotional plea, in which case we're spiraling out of control, in my opinion. But I defer to the board. With, I think you stated this, we need a supermajority to pass this. We're going to vote on the recommendation this evening, which is just to accept the recommendation, after which or before, it'd be really helpful to get the opinion of the current board members that are here, whether or not you want to see an actual ordinance drafted for a future meeting. And before we do any of that, if there's anybody else that has questions for the petitioner, or if there's anything else that you wanted to add.
I have one more question for staff, and we haven't discussed this, Rich, so it's a question out of the blue. Since this construction didn't benefit from a permit, is the village satisfied now that the structure in its placement and its configuration is in compliance, or do we still need to do that, other than the height? Do we know that it's properly set back from neighboring properties and so forth?
I believe that it's properly set back. That's appropriate. The only thing that we wouldn't be able to do would be inspect the post holes, because that's a normal inspection process. Once the holes are dug, then we inspect the depth, and then they pour the concrete or backfill with whatever material. I believe that the fence is more than physically strong, if you will, or constructed properly. It's just that it's too high.
Okay.
And Stan, we use the same exact fence line that was there before.
Makes sense, sure.
Right, because it was already done.
Me doing my homework.
Absolutely.
I also failed to mention, the fence is beautiful. That shouldn't change my vote, but the fence is beautiful and the situation is awful of what happened. I think everybody, everybody in this room agrees with you on that. And so whether or not we're supportive of that doesn't mean that we weren't impacted by the story.
I understand.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
No.
Okay.
Would you like a motion for the?
Yeah, entertain a motion for.
To accept planning commission's recommendation.
Yes, which generally, it doesn't have any bearing on your situation. So we're just accepting this. So that's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll?
Trusty Marasek?
Yes.
Trusty Bond?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
And Trusty Lee?
Yes.
Okay. So that carries 4-0. So now, with respect to an ordinance, just a straw poll generally, would you be supportive of, would you like to see an ordinance at a future meeting?
For this? No.
And this would be to grant the variance?
No.
No.
I don't think we can do it. I, I'd like to see us be able to allow six-foot fences in the village. I just, I don't think we can do it based on my question about the annexation agreement that has to come from the homeowners to change that.
Okay. Denny?
Yeah, I don't think the hardship, the dogs are gone, but I'm just still not happy with looking at it one minute, and then, as he said, once he told Jared, and Jared looked it up and thought, oh, this is confusing for the guy, I'm going to change it.
Can I just say something, though? Because you've mentioned that several times.
Yeah.
I don't think Jared went and changed it trying to do something shady. Somebody pointed out an error, and staff corrected the error.
That's right.
As opposed to it happening again. They clarified, yeah, I apologize. It wasn't an error, it was clarification.
This had been going on, Jared and I talked a lot. By the way, for all of you to know, Jared is like a complete total asset to the village. He's a fantastic guy. He held my hand through this whole thing and, you know, explained to him what I saw and the decisions that I made thereof. And it, I don't know when, I just know in preparing for the, my discussion with the zoning board and going back to the site then, it was changed to read for subdivision instead of HOA. And obviously, that was because of this situation.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying Jared did it in spite of that. I'm saying, once he talked to him and he realized that Jared went back, and then he did change it. But if I was just an individual and didn't understand it, it'd be very confusing for me to all of a sudden say, okay, oh, all of a sudden it changed. Well, that's in my favor then. See what I mean? Now, now I'm plowing ahead, even though I didn't get a building permit and my contractor's an idiot.
No, Denny, it wasn't that I saw it before.
No, it was afterwards.
It was.
This was after the fence was already in place.
Yeah, the.
He didn't base his decision to erect the fence because of the change in the website.
No, the.
This was all after the fence was in place.
Right.
No, 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 no. That's not true.
It was before the zoning committee.
The change to the website did not happen until after the fence was already established.
That is correct. The fence, the fence was established based on what the website said per HOA, not subdivision.
The fact is that children did not read the entire, Stan pulled up, it says, hers was.
I agree with that. I agree with that, but I'm just saying.
I understand what you're saying, Denny, but the reality is, I don't ever want to get in a situation where we're implying that our staff improving the information on our website is done so in any way other than to make sure that all residents understand what's going on, it's clear, it's clear, it's clear. So I understand the point. Okay. So are you, where do you sit? Would you like to see an ordinance?
I probably should vote against it, too, though.
Okay. So with that, it's unanimous at this board not to draft an ordinance approving the recommendation, so, or the variance. So with that, I really do appreciate it. I've made the comments about, and I've read, I've seen your packet, honestly, more times than I, than I ever really wanted to, to see the photos in there, because honestly, after the first time, they were burned into my memory. We have dogs of this, and it's something that I won't forget. Reality is, our fence regulations village-wide are not uniform, and so that creates situations like this, that I don't think there's any malice on anybody's behalf to create this situation. But we're here, and this is where we are, and we're trying to do what we can to mitigate that until these things expire in seven years or five years. So, anyway, thank you. I appreciate it.
What does that mean to me?
It means that the, there will be no ordinance to grant your variance, so effectively, it was denied.
Okay. And ongoing, then? What are my options?
What are your remedies? I would ask Rich and our attorney to chat with you.
I think that's something that we'd have to follow up on.
Yeah. So they'll work with you on remedies there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. With that, I need five minutes, and then we'll come right back. Only five minutes. Thank you. I got it, everybody? Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on. We have item B for separate action, is 2018 Shared Use Path Project Bid Award. Engineer Wallers.
Thank you, Mayor. So we took bids for the Shared Use Path construction, advertised on September 20th, bidding closed October 2nd. We had a total of five bids. The bid tab and letter are attached for your consideration. The project was over engineer's estimate by about 11%. The engineer's estimate was 182,000. The low bid was 202,390 dollars. It was below our budgeted number, and just so the board understands, we usually budget as much as a year, 18 months in advance, and we do a detailed analysis just prior to the bid so that we can compare the bid unit prices to make sure that nobody's front-loading a bid, or that we can make sure that the bid seems consistent with what we would expect. So in this case, we were underestimate but over our engineer's estimate. In talking with some of the contractors and staff, we felt that we might have a better success if we rejected these bids and then re-advertised next year, would be actually in January, February, when we go out for our road program. We thought by bundling this work with the road program, we'd get some economies of scale as well. So that, and we're late in the season, so it's not going to be a significant loss of use of the path because it'll be constructed reasonably early next year. So happy to answer any questions, but at this time, staff is recommending that we reject these bids and rebid it next, on next year.
All right. Any questions for staff?
Any risk that the costs are going to go up?
Yes.
Yeah, certainly, there's always that risk. A lot of the, one of the major elements is asphalt, so if there's a change in oil price, that yes, you can't have higher oil prices. So there's no guarantee that prices will be lower.
But we're also going to bundle it, so we might get some economy of scale with that?
We believe.
That, and bidding it in January as opposed to now, we've been getting some pretty good pricing on our road stuff.
We, you know, it's been an effective strategy for us.